... Join us in place.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone. Here we are at the afternoon meeting. Change of pace. Mr. Wilkis is joining us from afar on the telephone, so he's there listening attentively, I'm sure. Okay, let's approve the minutes of the April eighteenth, two thousand seventeen regular meeting.
Hi, man.
Carol?
I'll say.
Seconds? Oh, yes?
Yes.
Okay, public comments, no one signed in to speak today?
No.
Okay. All right, we, under our reports, presentations, our first item of business is Leslie Tyree, Esquire, extracurricular transportation policy. Welcome, Leslie. Have you like it?
Well, thank you for having me down today to talk to you all. Okay, basically, what we are talking about is possible revisions to the policy that you have for employment of personnel for extracurricular activities. And basically, sometimes we have a situation where it normally occurs, well, it only occurs, that I'm aware of, in your transportation department, where you might have an extracurricular assignment, you have a bus driver who has a regular job duty, but they want to take the extracurricular assignment. And in the past, what I've noticed that we've been doing is finding a substitute for that person, maybe to cover their extra run, somehow accommodating them to complete their regular job so they can take the extracurricular run. And I think that's a concern in lots of different ways. I'm not going to say that no other county does it this way, because many other counties do it this way, but many other counties do not do it this way also. Basically, extracurricular employment is really only supposed to occur outside your normal work hours. Extracurricular jobs are things like you're a football coach, you're cheerleading coach, you're taking a vocational run midday, a lot of kids to a vocational center or something like that. It's something that occurs routinely. It's not an extra duty. That's totally different. It's something we have to realize, we're not talking about here. We're not talking about extra duty, which is, we have a field trip going to the Clay Center, okay? That's a one-time thing or an occasional thing. It's not extracurricular. Those things are extra duty, and we're not even discussing those right now. We're just talking about bidding, these are bid upon positions, they are extracurricular, and they're supposed to be done outside your normal work hours. Now, the case law on it basically indicates, there's been lots of cases, I had one myself that was my own case, that I did for a county last year, where the grievance board said, you know, that's right, you do not have to allow people to leave their regular job just to give them the opportunity to do an extracurricular job. And while it's a nice thing to do sometimes for people, I see a big problem with it, the way a lot of our counties are facing financial concerns, because you're paying a substitute to cover their regular job, they're getting paid to do their extracurricular job, it causes a lot of confusion. So, in revising the policy, and this is just a first draft, this is not in final form at all, this is just a first draft, that would basically just incorporate in your policy what the law really is, which is that you do extracurricular assignments outside your regular job. And if you can't do, if you can't do a midday run because it starts at noon, and you're doing something else in your regular employment that doesn't end until twelve fifteen, then you really should not be eligible to do that twelve o'clock assignment. The case that I had in the other county involved a school aide, and they wanted to do an extra assignment, obviously, because you get paid more for it, and we want our people to make as much money as possible, but we're not obligated to cover their regular shift for them so they can do extra jobs. So that's kind of where we are. The case with her, she wanted to do an after-school, she went to ride on a bus after school, but her regular job didn't end until three o'clock. Well, she was going to be fifteen minutes or twenty minutes late to be able to take the extracurricular job, and the county said, no, we're not going to let you leave your real job early just so you can take this extra job. She filed a grievance, and the grievance board did uphold that and say, no, you're not obligated to allow people to leave their regular job so they can do an extra job. So, it can cause a lot of problems, just in scheduling and finding substitutes sometimes and many other things. So that's what the nature of these revisions deals with, and we're just throwing it out there at this point. We're not anywhere close to, you know, having it resolved. Just for you all to look at, if you had any questions you want to ask me about where we're going with this. Any questions?
Well, this is designed, as I read and as I hear you talk, to cover basically regular extracurricular assignments. Those things that occur regularly throughout the year, like a scheduled program at the school that you need someone for.
Yeah, that's right.
This is not the instance where you have a football run or a basketball run. Those are the extracurricular duties that you're talking about.
Well, those are technically called extra duty. Yeah, the two terms are extracurricular and extra duty, and it can be very confusing. That's why, yeah, that's a good question, I want to make sure we're clear about that, because extra duty and extracurricular are two totally separate code sections, they're separate laws, there's separate case law dealing with them. And extra duty is exactly what you just said, it's, you know, hey, we have a field trip, we have a ballgame, we're going to the Clay Center. It's something that is done on a rotating basis with our staff people. It is not something that they bid on, perform all year, and get to continue on year after year with.
Because in this document, you use the term extracurricular duties.
Right, 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 yes, I did. And that, we may want to change that word, because even though we understand what it means, you know, you have regular duties in your regular job, you have extracurricular duties, and you can also have extra duty duties. So putting that word in there might make it a little more confusing, and we could change that.
Well, I understand we have to follow the case law, whatever policy we adopt, to make sure that we're in compliance with the law.
Right.
But somewhere, maybe a definition of extra duty as compared to extracurricular duty.
Right, right, yeah, they are very different, and this policy is strictly extracurricular activities. And really, the main area I see it come up in this county is transportation. I don't know of instances where it comes up with aides or other type of service personnel, but it does come up quite often in your transportation area.
Once again, the rationale being that the rigor employee person for the transportation is already being paid for that time. And so if you permit them to take a run where something, substitute is required, you're paying additional cost for that substitute that you normally wouldn't pay.
Yeah, that's right. And it's also the thing of, you know, that's, we hire them to perform their regular jobs. So, we, even though we have these extra things that they can do, if those things don't fit in the parameters of being able to do them outside of their regular jobs, then that's not really the true intent of what an extracurricular assignment is.
Let me ask this, and it may be, well, we should be able to explain it. In that instance where we have, say, a bus driver who is performing this somewhat regular extracurricular duty, and he, we are having to employ a substitute, say, two hours of his day, does the bus driver get paid for his four-day? Then we pay a substitute, and then we pay that bus driver for the extracurricular duties as well?
Well, I think that that does happen.
Okay. So it's really, it's triple dipping at some point, okay?
It's not ideal. It's not good.
That's why, I mean, you have the extra cost of paying a substitute, you shouldn't pay.
Well, that's the main problem that I see counties have with. At one county, I discussed this with, you know, years ago, we talked about it, it was Campbell County, and they don't allow it for that reason, because it's just to, you know, you've got subs covering twenty minutes here, two hours here, that's not how it's supposed to be. You know, it's supposed to be, these are extra things, and if you can do them and still do what we originally pay you to do, then that's okay, and we want you to, because we need them, obviously, and we want people to make as much money as possible. But when it comes down to, you know, I can do this if somebody else can cover an hour of my day, no, I think that's going too far. That's my suggestion, but obviously, you know, we'll, we can talk about it further, but I just wanted to get this first draft to you, in case you had any specific more questions. Anything else you want to know about this right now?
What I'm suggesting, Members' Board, if everybody can take a look at it, because this is our first opportunity to see it, but we'll take a look at it, and then if we have any comments, we'll get them back to Mr. McKip, and then share them with you, and then at some point in the future, we'd be able to put it on the public review. Bill?
This also was an issue of where when they have an after-school program, and the bus driver cannot make that after-school program, but they bid on it, and they get it, and they hold seniority in it for two or three years, and never make that run, a sub's in it all the time. Both of them are not getting paid, but the three years down the road, that may change, and that person would be entitled to it.
Yeah, that's a-
So I think that's what kind of got us started down this road.
Yeah, that's a good point, and that's exactly right. You know, someone is basically bidding on it, holding it, but never is able to actually do it because of their regular schedule, so subs will be in it two years.
Because of seniority, they're able to get the position, and then they get to fill the task.
Right, yes, that's right. That's how it's been, and then they hold on to it, and the subs in it for ages, and it can cause other issues, yeah.
Well, what we do about those employees that have these jobs?
Well, I think what we'll have to do is, we'll have to look at how the policy is finally drafted, you know what I mean? Right now, we're just kind of talking about it. What we'll do is, I'll get questions and comments from everybody, and we'll look to see what our final draft looks like, and then we'll have some idea about how we'll address things like that.
I mean, realistically, if there is a bus driver with a lot of seniority, who holds a, what I'll call a prime regular run, that would not enable that bus driver to make an extracurricular run, would that bus driver be able to take a different regular run with his or her seniority that would enable them to both make a regular run and that extracurricular run, based on seniority?
Yes, I mean, based on having high seniority, you are in a good position to be able to bid to other positions if you want to.
Yeah, but that, there would have to be a job available.
Right, 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 yes, yes.
You can just bump another one.
Oh, no, no.
He'll pay that fee.
No, you just have to see, you know, anything that's posted, they could bid on.
Yeah. And I know this is very early in the draft, but one thing to think about that comes to mind, and it may be in here, is that I think we would need an exception to this policy, because there may be a program that we have somewhere where there is no bus driver from the county that can fulfill that extracurricular duty while also fulfilling their regular duty, or at least no one is willing to do it. I mean, if we have a program in Harts, and all the driver, none of the drivers there can fulfill it, the only driver is from Midway, that driver is not going to, most likely not going to want to take that extracurricular duty, so I, it-
Well, you'd probably end up with a substitute doing that.
I would think I'd have some discretion in that kind of situation.
Yeah, I mean, anytime there's truly, you know, and all policies are designed to be as comprehensive as they can be or what have you, but anytime there's truly a situation or an emergency situation that requires something to be done on behalf of the kids and the schools, and the superintendent has a lot of discretion to say, well, we're going to do it this way this time because of X, Y, and Z, so-
But that needs to be spelled out.
Yeah, we can put that in there.
As sure as there isn't something along those lines in this policy, the first time the superintendent exercises discretion that's in excess of what's in the written policy, the next time it happens and he doesn't exercise that discretion, we'll have grievance.
I can put it in there.
I'm trying to think, what's the last board they've made? Because we're going to need to nail this down.
Thirty.
That's what we put on public review for thirty days.
Well, I may not be able to put it, maybe, on the next agenda for fourth public review.
We could grandfather in those people in those positions now, like in the new positions we started.
Well, it says that if you can fulfill this extracurricular duty, you get to keep it. If you have it now, you don't, they're going to keep it automatically.
Yeah, you do keep them year after year.
We just need to, you know, to be able to take some time where we can read exactly what it says, and then keeping in mind that whatever we, our thoughts are, we have to remember what the code might say about these different areas.
Yeah, that's right. And you can just email me your comments or what have you through Mr. McKip, and then, you know, we'll get together a little more, more specific next time.
Sounds good.
Any other questions from anybody?
No, I don't think so, pleasure. Thank you very much. As usual.
Thanks.
So we'll, Jeff, we'll decide here, I guess, in the next week or two, if we can get all the input, and try to get something that we can put on draft.
And once we get it, we'll go back and forth, and then, once we have something that we think is ready for the board approval, I'll get that to you, take a look at it, and we'll get on public comment.
All right, sounds good. It's an area, apparently, that we do need to take a look at and try to resolve, since there aren't any, some, or any confusion. Okay, so next we have Greg Goss, and Greg's going to give us that maintenance update, because he's just feverishly looking at his computer right now, or his laptop, or whatever he thinks on that device.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things here I want to go over, and some of the things we've been working on, some that we've, we've got that's on the agenda to do. One of the things that we've been doing is, throughout the years, we've started, you know, we started setting up rack system, getting things organized a little bit, so we've moved on a little bit with that also, and setting up electric room, we've got a new electric room that's set up with the shelving and trays and all, that everything is going in order now, and I'm starting to get, State Electric's going to be barcoding everything, and we also set up our new plumbing room. Really were amazed at how much was in boxes that we knew and never knew about, different things that we've had, that's really brought down a lot of the ordering we do every month, it's brought considerably down, the things we've had on hand. Bus garage, we've ran, we've done some work there, that we ran some two-twenty lines and moved the tire machines and air lines and things like that. At Duvall, the sidewalk lights, the new LED lights that we've put in this past summer, we had one that was fogging up, and one that went out. They actually, we actually replaced all four of those, and we got reimbursed for the lights, so we replaced it. We've been doing some work, as you know, on the water line in different areas down around the ballfield over Lincoln County High School. We've got all that pretty much repaired. We are in the process of putting new manholes in, so that we'll have access to this, we've put all this valve and sectioning off every area, so that it's no longer five-thousand-foot water line, one person puts you down, and the whole facility's back. So we separated each location to where now we can manage that a lot better. We've got, kind of waiting on our, the welding shop and some of the kids at, students at Lincoln County High School, they wanted to kind of work on the lid, we've got some three inch steel, and they're designing it, so I'm kind of letting them design it, and they're welding it up so we can put the covers over top of our manholes. But, once that's done, we'll cover all that up and get that all straightened out. We've also been doing some work at the soccer, soccer area, we've moved electric over to the building, it has been inspected, and everything's good to go. We have contacted AEP, AEP's on the list, so as soon as we get on the list, they're going to be connecting that electric to that. One of the things we ran into at the soccer field, we're also working on the restrooms, trying to bring the restrooms online, so we'll start utilizing the facilities a little bit. Give me just a second here. One of the things we ran into is that, a couple of areas here that, you see this, we've got, we've had to go in and they'd set the flanges for your tools, and, you know, you get volunteer work, things like this, but we're good to have, but sometimes it makes our work double. And in this case, we had to chisel all this backed out of concrete. You notice the flanges here that you've got, the back of the wall is to this portion here, your flange is right here, if you try to set a commode, there's no way of holding it down, you just pull straight up out. So we've run into several issues with that and that, and fixing that and making that better. We are working on that, and as, we've already put the sinks in, and we fixed this area here, we've already set the commodes and getting that done.
Is it already water there, right?
The wiring, we're waiting on to hook the panel box inside of the building.
Water?
Yes, the water's already there, we're running PEX, we're using PEX water to run to everything. It does need a hot water tank, especially if you want a new concession, you have to have a hot water tank. Let me see my pictures here.
Greg, does it look like this will be functional, at least the restroom, restroom portion of it by soccer season, August, September?
We're trying, yes, I don't foresee that y'all, definitely not either.
It would be great to have the restrooms there, so fans don't have to walk to the back of the baseball field.
And that's what I'm working on, you know, the, the restrooms right now, and once we bring, I'm hoping to have the restrooms done this week. The restrooms will be done this week.
Be great.
All we're doing is finishing up the, we're going to have cold water, now, we're going to have cold water, we're not going to have the hot water yet, but we're plumbing for it, just a matter of having a hot water tank.
And you're running electrical for a hot water tank?
An electric to the hot water tank, and then, down in your concession stand area. So all that's been done, and we're hoping, I'd love to have it done by this weekend.
Would these teams be able to utilize it in the near future?
Yes, with the, with the restroom, as soon as we got the water on, and we'll be good to go.
Just asking a question, he's thinking.
Yes, he is. We start Saturday morning, the first morning of games is this Saturday.
I'm hoping. I mean, it's-
We need the grass nice and tight. It's what I'm at it.
The restrooms, I'm hoping that the restrooms will be functional up and running. Like I said, all that we have to do is, is connect our PEX up and turn it on. The only downside to that is the electric, so lighting inside there. We may do a push-on, push-off type, but there's something you can do to utilize it till we get the electric on.
As far as utilizing the concession stand, is that going to be down the road?
The concession stand, you know, I've talked to Mr. Plumley quite a bit, and we've been back and forth, and this has gone on for several, you know, where he's working on some different things. The last I've heard from the cabinets, the cabinets on the back wall, the cabinets on the back wall and the sink, and then the front area where the serving area is, by the two windows, would be another countertop there. Well, we talked once before, there were some cabinets and things that were taken out of the high school, and he was going to utilize those, I don't know if that's still in works or not.
I'm just trying to think, ideally, that would be ready by fall, but will it be ready by, for these, being this present?
We get the electric, and once we get the electric in and all your lighting, and all those things that are on, it'd be, then the focus would be on your concession area.
I mean, by fall, we ought to be fully functional, wouldn't we?
Yes, yes.
Well, there is electric there, close.
Electric's inside the building now.
Well, when I, last, last fall, there was electric in the concession stand, the extension cord.
Right. It's two hundred amp panel box, a hundred amp disconnect, it's wired like a facility should be wired.
Right, but as far as being able to utilize the concession stand, we were able to do that last year, and we had to improvise with some things. Not like we hope to be able to this fall, but-
Right, right, we want to function it like we normally would function it. One more thing I wanted to show you, because I, the thing about this is that, I don't know, something here, I don't know where it was.
Put the CTEs, pull in the wire, and put the boxes, then get the certified electrician to come in to hook it up.
It could get a different picture, couldn't it?
Hang on a minute, I've got, I'm in the wrong, the wrong area here. There we go. I don't know if I've got that one down here, I'm not sure if I've got it down here or not. Work this out, plug it in. One of the things that we've looked at also, and I, you know, this has, we've got the border risk, just kind of jumping ahead here a little bit, I was on that quarter, you can mail here, but, um, yeah. One of the things with it, we've got the border risk that'll be coming in May to all our schools and all through it, and I also look at our facilities very closely, the ones providing our insurance. So we have some issue with some steps there, I can't, I'm holding off here. The issue with some of the steps is that, you know, when you're having the kids that are doing this, they cut their, their eight-inch rods and nine-inch step, they try to cut backwards, so it's, it's definitely like a, so we have to, we have to switch all that around, we're going to be walking on that. Nothing major, but it still is, I'm just going to show you a picture.
Is this the soccer complex?
Yes, this is still the soccer complex. There's, there was two bathrooms, and both the bathrooms were, were in, sorry, there.
Yeah, the bathroom.
I have four pictures of that, though. Actually, I have four pictures, there's one in here, so let me pull up on the floor. That's what it is. I'm batting too good. There we go, there we go. I wasn't totally crazy, now, I knew there was something on there.
That looks more like a ladder than-
Stretching.
If you look, the, the steps is a big issue here as far as, if you, just think about that, it's flipped over the opposite way, the way it should be, but they're going to work, I think the students are going to clean up this, it's a good, it's a good tool to show them how not to cut a step. But if you see it, the rise is different, your eight-inch rise is actually eight-inch step instead of the rise part of it, so, yeah, it's a-
That's how they learn.
Yeah, they learn, they learn, so. So that's, that's on the, that's on the, some of the issues on the soccer that we're working with, and, and again, we'd like to get that up and running. I know you come over here Saturday, soccer's really, has evolved quite a bit, and it's a busy place on Saturday over there, we'd love to have it up and running. Lincoln County, we're still doing a lot of things, some things I want to talk to you about the high school here in just a second. Harts, we did purchase the pods, if you've been up in Harts, and where we purchased two pods for, for storage, or metal storage buildings that we bought, and they come down delivered, and we have leveled them up, and they are in use now. Also, we took some gravel up in front of Harts, and we've made some repairs up there. Garden Valley, several, several different repairs up there, door sweeps, things I got exterminated, been dealing with exterminators, some issues there, we've done a lot of things with that. At West Hamlin Elementary, we've installed several, several, the, the really nice hand dryers, we've tried to go around systematically and eliminate these throughout our schools because the cost and the condition, if you walk in West Hamlin, the trash cans would run over all the time, so we've done away with those, we're not even trash cans in the restroom now, because they do have the really good hand dryers, and they seem to really, really appreciate it, from what I've talked to the teachers and all, so. The deputy trailer, we've had some issues on the trailer here at the Lincoln County High School, we got to do some repairs, we replaced a lot of the flooring in that, in that trailer, modular hall, whatever you want to call it, and installed a hot water tank, the hot water tank had been leaking, you know, there, it was pretty well. Still have several issues, a lot of issues at Duvall with our roofs, things we've been doing with the roof, yard roof repairs that we've been doing, a lot of doors that we've had to repair also. One of the things we've been doing, and we started at Garden Valley, we're just about to piece up at Garden Valley, is that we've been taking all of our air conditioner, window air conditioners out of the frame itself, taking them outside the building and hosing them and cleaning them off really good. That cuts down on a lot of issues with the dirt and getting them, where the smell comes out of them is a lot fun, and then the old stack of smell, so we've been doing a lot of that. During the break, we did do some painting on- During the, uh, break, we did do some painting, we went through all our schools, and tried to paint all of our lines for, uh, for parking. We'll continue on with doing some more, we painted some issues back here on the building, metal that we replaced, we've got it on, and. Uh, we also done, uh, we've been doing some areas, especially where we have a lot of areas where the walkway goes out, between the portable buildings that we have, uh, we've been sealing those with the sealant and putting sand in them, cut down where the lots are swiveling, making that happen. Uh, during our CD day we had here, we brought, I brought all the custodians in, uh, went over a lot of things with them, and it's, uh, pretty positive, and, uh, we brought a gentleman in, and we sent him cell to Mike Martin, that would, uh, would buy a lot of our chemicals off of, and our supplies, we get the things off, and. So we done an inservice and went over some things that we're looking at. We tried to, tried to get this year, throughout the year, is that we spend a lot of money on supplies. And one of the things that, that I've noticed when going around the schools and talking with a lot of the custodians is, and even with the substitute custodians, we'll talk about that, but they don't know, a lot of times, it's like you go to, the mix we have has a little, little valve on it, you open the valve, and you put it in there. Of course, it's, has directions on it, the directions says mix order cups to, whatever your water. Everybody just opens it up and just watches it flow down, so they're not going by the mix. So we're going through a lot of, lot of supplies in that, not properly using, and then it builds a film up on your floor, because you don't, if you don't have a mix properly, it's like anything else, you can get a film built up, and, 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 it's, we're forcing it in, and as far as mopping the floor, just leave it alone at that point. So we, what we does, we brought, we brought some people in, and what we're, what we're doing is, every school, they're gonna provide this, the company's gonna provide this to us. Every school, four sinks at God Valley, different places, there'll be automatic dispensers on that. You put the chemical in there, you turn the water on, puts your hose in, and mixes it all for you. So we're gonna cut down on a lot of the waste that we've been doing with that. The other thing to bring in is, uh, a lot, we go through a tremendous, and a lot of it is abuse or, or misuse of, and it causes a lot of issue when you have, uh, cabots are constantly stopped up, and we're always having to deal with that issue, so. We've all seen, you go with a round dispenser, or the big dispenser on each school, and have that at each school now. So we're gonna cut back on all this that we're spending on, uh, the supplies, the paper towels, the toilet papers, those type of things, about utilizing that more.
Hey, Greg, are you getting the ones that automatically cut you off when you get one square in hand?
No, we're, we're hoping that it's gonna bump over to the second one. It's working, these were, these seem to be pretty nice, we're gonna try them out, and, you know.
You can adjust the tension in those, so you get one square, when you go in, you get one square.
Yeah, it can be a fighting day there. Yeah, so that's, that's some things we're looking at, and then we're looking at too, and what we've done, Mingo County, Campbell County, some of the other counties are doing this. We have them deliver bulk to us, and actually, we're gonna save money by doing this, but I wanna do it every month, but due to the size of some of these orders, uh, we've got a baseline now, every school has been ordering our supplies, so July first, we'll look at all of that, and we'll see how many cases of, uh, supplies that God Valley's used, how many cases of Duval's used, all these things that we've done buying, and then have that drop ship to each school every two weeks. So we'll break it down, every two weeks will be delivered to each school. So we'll take out our delivery part, which will free me up a little bit more for someone else to be able to do more in that. Same time, it actually cuts the price with, now, it's like some of the window cleaners and furniture, stuff like that that we get, uh, even the scuff pads and things that we get, the urinal, deodorizing, it cuts the price for those usually by half, so. We're looking to save some money by doing that, yes, the way we're gonna be doing it, we buy it, and then we'll drop ship it. We don't have to, they will do that holder, and they'll ship it for us, so. So that's, that's some things I'm looking at, and, uh, and doing on that also. One of the things that, that we talked about, and Mr. Vick and I have talked about this on several occasions, and, and throughout the schools, as, uh, LSIC meetings, and I, all board members who went to a lot of different schools looking at it, uh, OEPA audits, all these things that we've looked at. One of the things that's always been brought up about our schools is the conditioning of our schools. We walk into school, and there are sub schools that we like to hear bragged about, that's a clean, and they're nice, other schools are not up to par. So we have some issues here, and we've been trying to work through this and develop a way to make it better. So what, what we've came up with is that we have started a, a custodial training. So they go a week, and we've got twelve that's already went through the training. So what we've got, we have two, two sets of, uh, employees that when we hire them as, uh, substitute custodians, they've been going to God Valley with two trainers, uh, Ms. Terry Terry and Josephine Arnold. And those of you who've been to schools, you know when you go to God Valley, that school looks nice. It's, if these like to take, they take, and, and our, and Jesse, the, the daytime custodian, he takes, they take a good pride in their school and in their work. So they've been doing this training, so they go through a process, and what we set up is, it's either pass or fail. At the end of it, at the end of the week, they're there every day for a week, and at the end of the week, we go through every condition in the custodial, what they should be doing at school, keep the school playing. Showing them how to do it, properly mixing, these types of things, showing them how to do this. I, I had a custodian that's been on a sub at, uh, on a long-term sub position in, uh, Midway, and come back from the training, and, you know, she's excited, yes, well, I've always wanted to know how to do this, but I never knew how to do it, so now I'm gonna go back to school, and we'll start doing this at the school. So we're getting some really positive feedback from it, occasionally you may have one or two that may stumble along the way. And we're trying to set this up to where the principals, once we get through this process, then we go back and we look at what schools, what we need to do to bring this school up, and to make this school look like, look like a new school. So one of the things we're gonna, gonna offer is a retraining for the existing custodians, where they can go through a retraining based on the principal's evaluations. That's the key that they have to do, their evaluation is part of their process. So we're hoping, and, well, once we get all this working, we have, uh, another group that's gonna be going through it, the last group that we hired, uh, and then hopefully by summer, then we'll have some position where we can start training the existing custodians, if there's areas that they need training on. So we're hoping that that's gonna work out and make our schools really look a lot better. At Harts, we've, uh, we've done some, some things at Harts. Already, when you go through a school, and Harts is, uh, what is it, six years now at Harts, uh, pre-KA, we're already going through, and, and if you go through the main hallway at Harts pre-KA, a lot of the areas, the main entrance areas and different areas have can lights. These can lights are two seventy-seven volt can lights, they're all going bad, a lot of our emergency can lights. Very expensive to place, uh, two hundred and seventy-seven some dollars for a ballast, and then if you get into the emergency light of it, then you get into a Bodine, and those are around three fifty for the Bodine along with the light. So what we've done there is we've started replacing them with LED lights. They go up in there, they're really nice lights, and they're five-year warranty on those, we're giving them for fifty-nine dollars a piece. So we just started replacing them at that. It was, the guys up there the other day was doing, and then all the teachers and all were coming out the hallways, and is that the first time those lights have ever been on? They're so bright, they're not used to a light being that bright, so. Those are some areas that we're looking at, uh, just, uh, just thirty of them were bad, and just bad valves. We're looking at that, getting that changed. All right, it's, uh, chillers. Uh, we don't wanna talk about chillers, I don't. We have an issue with our chiller, the new chiller, at the high schools. We don't wanna talk about that.
It's gotta be under warranty, right?
It is under warranty. The problem with the chiller, so I have some pictures coming up, so I'll show you this. Is that they fit, there was some issue with, I'll pull it up here real quick. With the chiller, we have some issues with a part, the chiller is a, is a variable speed, there's two compressors on it, and if you've ever been around the variable speed devices, like whether it be pumps, whatever, instead of the pump being variable speed, now the chiller's a variable speed. And that's for efficiency and all these things for the chiller. But what's happening is, pumps will rev up and down, they'll, they'll go by the hertz, at sixty hertz you're a hundred percent, at twenty hertz you may be at twenty-two percent. These different ones, it just revs up and down. So on a process, being some newer technology, is that the lines are vibrating, and when they're vibrating, I don't know if you see that very well or not, but, um, underneath here, they go into what they call an economizer, and the economizer is for energy efficiency, so it goes to the economizer, it may not need to open everything up for, uh, all your, your free on things for your, uh, for your unit, so it uses the economizer. So what's happening is, if I can get this, let's see that, I don't get this better projector on. In this area here, where the lines come in, this is a stainless steel coupler that is inside this coil. So what's happening in the stainless steel coupler, during that revving up and down, the line is vibrating and moving. So what's happening, this happens on both sides, this is not just one side. So what's happened here is that it's broken the well, I'm sorry, it's well, it's broken that, so what they've done, what the manufacturer is working on a fix for, uh, but what they've done is that they've, uh, they bypassed it, so it wouldn't have been allowed to bypass it until a good fix. Right now, we have, uh, one compressor running, and then the old chiller compressor that's running also. Uh, they are working on a permanent fix for this, they think they're gonna have to do some, uh, on the lines themselves, to do something to help absorb the, uh, the vibration that's going up and down. It is under warranty, that's, that's the best thing. Uh, my concern is too, is, uh, we got eighty-eight degree temperatures or something like that, I know later part of this week we'll have some higher temperatures. But we've been also working on, uh, the York chiller, the number two chiller, or number one chiller that we left existing. And what we've been doing with that, we took the old compressor that was damaged out of the chiller that we replaced. We took it out, and we took in, as maintenance, we put the, took it out of the old one and put it in here, and now we have a, we have a, uh, B and B heating and cooling, here's getting it up and running. It's just about ready to go online, we have two compressors that's running right now, and then this third compressor will make that chiller fully functional again. By doing this, we, we're trying to save about twenty-six thousand dollars for a compressor, they're not cheap. The only thing we gotta do, the only thing we gotta do right now is it has a heater that's in the bottom part of, has to be drilled out, and then, uh, it will be up and running. But we've had it on pressure testing and different things all last week, where it's been unhooked for quite a while, and we put it in there, so. And it did pull, pull down about five hundred microns, which is really good, I was really pleased with that. Call it being open, you gotta be concerned with that, so I'm really pleased with that. That pretty much goes where we're at, now, we do have an issue at Harts. I thought I was out of the sewer business, but we're still in the sewer business. So Harts, what we found out, you never say, can, you never learn anything, oh, it's up today, I didn't realize. At Harts, we did have some issue with some sewer smell, that, at the ball field, at the baseball field, and even during the football season, where the apartment building is, and the concession stands. Well, we found out that there's a hidden septic tank up there, we didn't know about. So all this is going into a septic tank that has blown till now, it's, it's being pumped out right now, and people up there today, up there today pumping out. My concern with that is that are we, we're gonna pump it out, and we're gonna watch it, we may have to replace the leach bin field, which is down over the hill, in a pond there by the creek. So we're concerned that we may have to dig it up and put a new leach bin field in. I, I suppose it's been there since the, uh, do you remember when did they, that section was built on there, used to be vocational in there, but, uh, probably in the late eighties, or something, yeah, I've been there quite a while. That's, that's the only other issue we gotta do. Other than that, we've, we've done, you know, some, uh, things we've got planned for the summer, we're going to be, going through all the units at the, uh, Hamlin, and, uh, middle school and elementary and West Hamlin, we're gonna be doing some cleaning and coals, and some adjustments and things like that. We did have some training last week, uh, I know Mr. uh, Mr. Pramings was there, and Mr. Richard, and then I, too, of our, uh, PEX there, we're in, learning about the automation system standovers that can use or can't use. And they're really good training, and we, we, they learned quite a bit, so we're, we're doing a lot of the things that used to be done by contractors, and we're doing all these things in the house. And that's really, and this is the biggest thing, is your handover control, so. We're learning how actuators work, and we're learning how to trouble trip an actuator, and we're gonna be cleaning coils and figure out why, if I've got a chilled water valve that's at a forty-three degrees, and my discharge temperature is seventy-two, we got a problem. So you gotta look, if you've got cold water going through there, it's either not going through the coil, or the valve's not working. What we found out is a lot of these, over the years, have never been cleaned, and we're finding out that the coil itself is stopped up. So what happens when that coil stops up, you only get a portion of that coil that's gonna be cold water, the rest of it just, it just stops right there, it doesn't flow through it. And you want that coil completely clean and clear on the inside, to where when you blow through, you're gonna get that whole area that give forty-three degrees water, and it becomes more efficient. So those are things that we've got planned for the summer. I have some concerns at God Valley, uh, we're looking at that, I've got a quote, uh, to fix the wall there, but and I've looked at that on several occasions now that all the dust has settled, we got the larger area there that we have, uh, at, that was tore down, part of the cathedral, or referred to cathedral. The backside is a little bit higher, and the concrete is kind of busted there, and the front side is concrete, and over by the concession stand, there's two restrooms. Now the lines are filling up with mud, and I'm kind of concerned about the, the walkway back now. But these are trip hazard, these are, it's not, you've got so many different places in that concrete, it's really becoming a really bad hazard to do. I'm thinking about, we can leave the larger area to these smaller ones, we're probably gonna have to get rid of that concrete, get it out of there. Some of it's up about high that, high elements, and on the other side, it drops down there, and now it's just, it's becoming a real trip hazard with that. Am I any questions?
Thank you, Greg, the, the work you're doing is just incredible, always a pleasure, keep it up. Okay, thank you, Mr. Goss. Okay, let's move to finance, then, here's what Mr. Ellis has to say.
I'm gonna be just a little bit longer than Greg.
You never know, Ray, you, you know, if he's gonna hang a load, you know, he's gonna ask you something.
Well, if I'm longer, it's gonna be on you all, not me.
Mr. Braysley?
Yes, sir.
Uh-oh.
I asked, uh, Greg to speak up.
Okay.
Can you scoot that over a place?
I can just come up here for a minute.
Stand in front of it, or, or you're gonna do? Move the podium, you can place lane paperwork.
Uh-huh.
You're welcome to move the podium, you can place lane paperwork.
I don't wanna hurt his record, I think.
I can lift this paper, I'm fine, can you hear me?
Clearly.
Okay. It fades off, but there's no there.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go through everything on that monthly report, it's a bunch of numbers you all can look at for comparison purposes.
Now, which one are we talking about, this one?
The one that you, no, that's the revenue, this is the one you got in your book.
Oh, the big financial.
Yeah, it's got the balance sheet and some, some trends in it.
Okay. Okay.
The one that I handed out before the meeting on the tax, the tax revenue comparison.
Yeah.
I did it a little bit different this time. And I broke down the current, and I broke down all the revenue and then I pulled the excess out just so that you can see where we're at. And we're about two and a half percent lower than where we were at last year. Now, what we just approved on our levy calls was about, what, three point four million dollars, I think, something like that. What the, what we anticipate next year. Our original levy call was three point five, six-one million. So we're already at that this year. So anything now is above what that original levy call was supposed to be. It's just that last year, we had a lot of revenue. So, you know, that helped go towards our fund balance at the end of the year. So I'd still like to be where we were at last year. I don't think it's gonna happen because I don't think we're gonna get any more large tax checks. We had one in March, we had one in April. And from what I've looked at in past years, everything else was, there's nothing gonna be three or four hundred thousand dollars that's gonna come in here. Everything else will be smaller.
We will be able to meet the excess levy obligations already, right?
Yeah, we ought to be fine. Yeah. Yeah, we're above that now, so those budgets, we'll look at them and we ought to be fine. Oh, yeah, and I misspelled regular on the third line. I hate doing that, so I didn't intend for regularity, regular, regu larri supplemental. That's not a word that I use anyway.
You shouldn't have spoken with him.
Yeah, I know, but you'd get home and you'd look at that and say, well, God, Ray's an idiot.
We worry more about.
I try not to misspell.
We worry more about the numbers with you.
Well, I can't add either, so. Good thing we have computers. But but you can see we're ninety percent of where we were last year on total tax collection compared to where we're at now. So we got another three months to collect the other ten percent, which, like you said, I don't think we're gonna quite get there. But I don't think we're gonna be hurting. Our cash, we have more cash right now than what we had last year at this time. But that can fluctuate like that. Two payrolls and, you know, paying for a football field and, you know, things like that. And that cash drops really quick. But our tax, our state aid formula kicks in in April and May, it'd be about two million dollars a month. Whereas during the rest of the year, it's one point three million. So they know that tax collection's gonna go down. They're getting money in. Their revenue's coming in, so now they're gonna give us the majority of our money or, you know, at least increase. Working on the budget right now, I got probably ninety percent of the salaries pulled over. We finally got the steps increased for everybody's yearly experience and I had to do that twice. There's about fifty steps to do that and I skipped step forty-four, so I had to go back and do forty-four. And then, you know, finish it out and then pulled over. So now we're just gonna work on the expenses and pull all the levy expenses and put the revenues in. So hopefully in the next week, it'll start looking like a real budget. Then we'll have to go back and fix our errors and find out what the state wants us to change. So I think we're on, we'll be really good for around May twentieth to have that proposed budget done. I could be wrong, but I had to have it done by then anyways, but I feel really comfortable now. I didn't feel really comfortable till yesterday. So financial statements are one thing. I did those for several years, or at least I helped on them, you know, with them and Logan. The budget's something totally new, so I've learned something every time I've worked on it. I think we're at a point now where.
Yes, Mr. Wilkerson?
Sounds great.
Okay. It sounds like female voice.
Well, that may be sneaky.
I thought you mean that, no.
Okay, switching topics. Last week, I talked to you about student insurance. Well, I asked a lot of questions and Ray, the question you asked, I had already asked that. And I phrased it a little bit differently. And the response I got was that deductible is just something that's not paid by the insurance company. The insurance is gonna pay what they will. You still got your deductible. They will pick that up. That's gonna be part of the expenses that your insurance doesn't pay. So I had him rephrase that today and it's what I thought, but I didn't wanna answer you and be wrong, but I'd asked that that morning that you asked. Here's the kicker. They were quoting me at eighty percent and I wanted a hundred percent because I told you it was a hundred percent. It's not, you know, it's not anything that we have to have, but I thought that, and Logan, I'm sure it was a hundred percent. He quoted me eighty percent here. For the eighty percent, it was sixteen nine and for a hundred percent coverage, it is eighteen nine. So it's two thousand dollars more if we go forward with this.
What do you mean eighty versus a hundred? Coverage?
Coverage, yeah. I mean, and it goes up to maybe, I can't remember if it's fifteen or twenty-five thousand, but it's a lot of money. So, you know, it was really good and if, you know, you all talk to Jeff, we can bid this out. I've already got another person giving me a quote on it. The guy called me this morning. The company who provides the sports insurance for Lincoln County High School and that additional insurance parents can buy. Well, we can get rid of all that because we would be footing the bill for that, you know, I don't think that they would need that. It's my opinion and I could be wrong. You all may know more about that policy than what I did. But I talked to him today and I gave him our numbers for all of our students and then he kept wanting to know, well, how many do you have playing sports? You know, I don't want it to be that way. I just want it to covers everybody the same, you know, whether you're on a football field or not.
And once you go pay to the student activity fund?
Yeah, we could do that, but, you know, some of these small schools will have a little bit of trouble. But somebody like Ranger, it may only be, you know, eight hundred dollars, so it might not be too bad. And we helped them out last year when school started by some of the allocation. Putting it in step seven, paying for it, that, you know, some things that way. So it alleviated some of their problems with cash that they had or money that they had access to. But I think that we can work this out where the high school probably saved money. You know, I think that's the conversation we had with Dan. It wasn't, he's spending five thousand dollars now, so I think it'll be, it'll be less than that.
Ray, one thing, I know you know this, I mean, it's all yours, but when he's asking you about the number of athletes, I understand everybody's gonna get the same level of coverage if we do this, but the number of athletes versus non-athletes, that's gonna run the premium. The more athletes and non-athletes, it would increase the premium because one, one sports-related injury, one trip to the hospital, one MRI is seven or eight thousand dollars exposure.
Well, actually, they came in office today saying they were having problems with the insurance policy from the high school, actually. And they had about twenty-six thousand dollars in costs, like committing, you know, a shoulder injury, so.
That's why I wonder. I mean, I don't doubt the validity of the rates you quote, but I have had kids who have had sports-related injuries, soccer-related injuries, and the bills that I got and some of which were later paid through the school's insurance, some of which I paid, were three or four thousand dollar bills a pop, a hospital visit.
Well, what happens with that is next year, our premium goes up, you know. I mean, we'll just pay more. We can drop it, you know. Again, we don't have to do this. I just think it's really gonna, I think it'll eventually save, it'll save the high school money and anybody buying sports insurance. So.
Okay, let's get back to this eighty percent again. So the eighty percent, would you want it to be reimbursed for eighty percent, the individual here?
Well, I mean, if you had an injury, it's four thousand dollars and your insurance paid three thousand of it, you got a thousand left over.
Okay.
So that'd be eight hundred to a thousand dollars.
Whose obligation would be to pay that?
The insurance would pay eight hundred, you'd pay two hundred?
Secondary insurance. If it's students, are there parents in responsibility for that?
There are parents, and I had this question posed, and I mentioned it. You know, if you had a thousand dollar deductible and everything's paid but that thousand, that's what the secondary insurance will cover. If eighty percent, it'd be eight hundred. If it's a thousand, it would, or if it's a hundred percent, it'd be a thousand dollars. If somebody doesn't have insurance, it kicks in right away.
Okay, so me as a parent, if I choose the secondary insurance, I'm gonna be covered through the two of them, right? But if I choose not to have the secondary insurance, then I would have to pay the difference or would the schools, who would pay that difference?
Well.
It's not referring on choice.
Yeah, this is what we got. This, parents won't have to say anything. They don't have to pay into it. They, I think now that they offer a secondary accident policy.
Is they offer it and it's not required. It's an option that parents may take.
We can get rid of that, totally, I think.
Let's think about it. So right now, if there's an accident there, the Board of Education is not responsible for those costs. If the parents have chosen to get that insurance, then they have the insurance and they're covered. If they've chosen not to, then they have, you know, the right to pay for that.
Yeah, they're gonna, the board didn't wanna pay.
Right, the board is not responsible. So, but that's what I'm trying to get at here. If you go the eighty percent route and it's eighty percent of it is covered and they choose to have as an option the secondary insurance and they get that, then they're gonna be, have that other twenty-seven covered. But if they don't, there's twenty percent there that seems to me like it's gonna be the parents' obligation to pay that.
Yeah, that's the way I would understand it.
And not the boards.
Yeah, we wouldn't be.
But they would have to be, they would have to be advised with that. If you don't take the secondary insurance, then you could be, you know, have that obligation on you should something happen.
So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and I gave you the wrong price because I, there was a misunderstanding between myself and the.
But under the currently existing scheme for athletes, let's say, each sport or school buys a athletic policy that covers athletic injuries. Whether it's an eighty or a hundred percent policy, every student that's participating in that sport is covered by that policy regardless. But then there's also, you said, a second supplemental policy that covers what that insurance doesn't cover, right or wrong?
If we do what I want done, we don't, we don't have to have everybody buy.
I understand, I understand. But right now, each sport or each school is buying a policy to cover athletic injuries.
Yeah, I believe they do.
But only athletic injuries. If a student falls down a set of steps at school, then we're gonna get sued.
That's not, the board's an obligation. Now, you may, you may be sued to get it, but typically, and I've had this question posed many times, we had this happen, who pays the hospital bill? It's your obligation. If they couldn't file suit against you, no, certainly they could. But that's the point I'm trying to make here. Typically, the Board of Education does not pay those medical bills. And that's why I'm trying to understand here, if we were to have a hundred percent be ideal, because now that's no longer a question because the insurance company's paying a hundred percent of the medical cost and everybody's happy. But if they pay eighty percent and the parents are made aware of the fact that they can obtain a twenty percent or, you know, a policy that'll cover the other secondary, the twenty percent, then everything would be paid and nobody, there wouldn't be an issue there. But if they chose not to, it's gonna be just the way it is right now, should an accident occur, that that, it's their obligation and not the boards.
That's, yeah, that makes sense. That would be the way it works. Just, and I'm not real familiar with all the insurance policies that schools are buying. But is that offered at every school or just at the high school to have that?
At one time, it was something that every student had the option, that it would be an annual thing that they'd come in. Well, they have to have.
Well, I talked to that guy today who did that, the West group, I think.
Well, like Fred said, the athletes have to have insurance to participate. But the individuals, they may choose to participate. They used to call it what, pilot live or whatever it was. They used to, you know, it was an option that parents had that they could get this policy. But maybe, you know, some did, some didn't. But if they didn't do it, should something happen, then they had the obligation.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the way I understand it.
Maybe the next time you meet, if you can ask your president if they, ask the president if they offer that still. I mean, I would think they did.
Well, we had more conversation with them, but I think we do need to follow back up with them again because you may answer some questions here today that we really didn't share with them at the last meeting, so.
Yeah, that secondary, their secondary insurance that the students buy never came up in that conversation we had the other day, did it?
So we need, again, make an eye, but I think we do need to have a conversation.
See, what they'd be, it really would be a secondary insurance. It would be insurance when they're at school, it would be the primary insurance. We're talking about non-athletes, just a student.
Yeah.
Something happens, so we.
Right now, if an athlete gets hurt, the parents don't have to pay a penny, do they?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Do they?
I did. I can't speak to every parent. I tell you, I paid a bunch.
It's not be a hundred percent.
It was a hundred percent. And that's why I asked those questions already.
What did they?
I, I don't remem, and there were issues beyond the policy. Let's just say that some things were not timely submitted by the parents that took my children to the hospital. And I had to go back after a year or so and after that notification period was expired to negotiate.
That period's kinda important right after that.
Well, yeah, yeah, it is, but still, I don't think the policy, and I've heard other people complain, but I think normally it's a notice issue, not so much the policy, but a notice issue. And but in this instance, on that issue, should we decide to adopt a policy like this, there needs to be extensive training, everyone on the notice.
Yeah, I mean, the way it worked in Logan, I can tell you the way it worked there. There was an AIG form, an accident form, and it was in three parts on the front. The top of it was filled out when the accident occurred that day. When the parent picked up the kid, they were given that form. Or if it went, you know, if kid went in an ambulance, the parent was, they were giving the parent that form, the doctor filled out part of it and then the parent filled out part of it and then it was sent in. And once they received everything from the insurance company, you sent those the receipts to the insurance company with that form. And then, you know, and it worked really well. But if the secretary didn't know how to do it, or if the school didn't realize, you know, because, you know, staff rotates and sometimes people get in positions and they don't, you know, realize they're supposed to give that form, then, you know, it caused problems for people. And then other times, people get that form, they throw it away. That was, that happened like three or four times. They just, well, they didn't throw it away. They didn't do anything with it. And they came to me saying, what are you gonna do for it?
Providing universal coverage to all different students, right?
Yeah. Yeah, from pre-K to high school, you know, any kind of school I could. Changing the subject again, Dr. Payne sent out a memo to everybody the other day, wanting, you know, wanting the boards to look at the budgets. Wanting you to keep, I think the personnel was below eighty percent of your budget.
You said that was the average or typical?
Yeah, to look at that. On Fund eleven, we're about seventy percent of that budget is salary, so we had a lot of room.
Well, the salaries and benefits and everything.
Everything, yeah. I included everything, about seventy percent. Fund sixty-one was about fifty-four percent. But the reason why it was so much lower is because that's where all the food service, you know, that's a huge expense, just food, feed the kids.
Well, I think what he was saying is typically eighty percent of a board of education's budget is personnel related.
Yeah, we, yeah, we're close on.
Yeah, he's just giving an average because that's all we've been kind of got.
So I, we're below that, so there's other things, I guess, if we had to cut, we probably could. But that's deceiving because that fifty-four percent in Fund sixty-one, you can't cut food service out, so.
Yeah, I think what he was getting at is your overall budget and how you stood, because apparently there are some counties that are on the verge of deficit. Some may be in deficit and wanting every county to see where you stood.
Relation, yeah. That's the calculations I come up with. I think we're okay with that, so.
But at some point, is the four percent part of that?
Yeah, I think so. I'm about to read it right now.
Yeah, but he was saying ideally you would have a four percent surplus.
Oh, your carryover?
And he's saying after you meet all your budgetary obligations, that you would have, anticipate to have a four percent.
It's between the three and five carryover, you know, your fund balance, right? That's what I understood.
The terminology is, he was saying you ideally would wanna have four percent surplus above your requirement.
That's what he says. He said as of June the thirtieth, only ten county boards of education, which we've met the national recommended.
That was sixteen percent, yeah.
Says from three to five percent, it's what it said, unrestricted sun balance.
So at some point, I guess, it may be after you did the budget and all that, where you're able to determine where we stand regarding that.
Says a national recommended carryover percentage, and we were above two percent last year.
Well, but he's saying it ought to be one three, five percent.
Yeah. That's what you should think.
It's not required, but he.
Two million would be five percent, so what were we, one point? I can't remember.
I think what he's saying here, you never know when you're gonna have an emergency, you know, something, they just wanna come up with a beat. It'll cost you a lot of money, you're not aware of it. If you've got, just like at home, you've got a little savings, you can pay for that. If you don't, you're not going to. Then, you know, he alludes to the fact that, you know, if you go into deficit, then the potential there, especially for a board. My liability will be there.
That's all I had.
Mr. Wilbur, do you have any questions? Mr. Ellis?
None, all very clear.
Okay, good man. Anybody else have anything? All right, thank you, Ray.
Was I longer than Grant?
That's close. All right, thanks very much.
You've got a lot to do, buddy.
Don't keep hold of two up.
Well, he did, at least we didn't have Mr. Atkins in here today. But all three of them in here, I don't know. Be here for dark. Okay, let's go to the mill scrape section. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Mr. Wilburson, second by.
Mr. Wilburson, second by Mr. Currie. Okay.
All right.
What we got, Jeff?
Item A. Willing Jesuit University student Rhonda Couch to complete student teaching in Lincoln County High School. Call two thousand seventeen, this is the motion.
Any discussion on that one?
I think that's all, yeah.
Okay, all yes vote?
Yeah.
All yes, all right. Finance, motion please. Move Rowdy? Second by Carol? Phil or Ray?
Schedule of invoices totaling one hundred forty-one thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-six cents. It's attached, a county pension for the following retired employee effective April one, two thousand seventeen, paid from county excess levy fund. And then, of course, we just went over some of the financial stuff.
I think we've covered that pretty well. Do I have anything else? If not, is that an all yes on finance, Jeff?
Yes.
All right, all yes. Okay, personnel motion, please. Fred? Second by Rowdy? Now we're getting filled out.
Item A, transfer of professional personnel. Item B, appointment of substitute service personnel. Item C, appointment of curricular personnel. Item D, leave of absence. And item E, retirements and resignations. I give you an updated list. At the last meeting, we talked about the position up in the way, get permission post that. They were ten over, now they're eight over, it's kind of wait and see. And then we may come back with you, we may need a teacher for the old reach there. So these will be posted May first. And also, another retirement will be posted because you won't act on it until next week. Cindy Schimpf at Hamlet, special ed teacher, retired, brought in the papers today. So that'd be an additional position we'll post later on.
Okay, anything else? Personnel, ask anyone? If not, then is that an all yes on the personnel?
Yes.
All yes. Okay, we'll go to the comments and concerns. Board member, do y'all have anything to say? Just get your hand. Oh, if not, are you still requesting executive session? Or do you want to talk about anything other than?
Just, well, I just wanted to mention, once again, that next Tuesday at four thirty will be our student celebration beginning at four thirty. We'll hold the celebration in a large conference room because there's potential to be a big group of people here. And then we'll come back to that here for the board. That's all.
All right, okay. Mr. Meade just asked for a legal update in executive session. We have a motion to do that. Carol makes a motion, seconded by Dr. Fred. Going to executive session to discuss personnel legal updates at two fourteen P M. All yes?